Can't mess up today, it's easy, you know. Hey, if there's not one. See how good you adjusted? He ain't going anywhere. I didn't deny it all that stuff. I'm gonna bring that up today in a special motion. All right, good morning. Let's call the Rankin County Board of Supervisors meeting June 6, 2022 to order. Mike Word, since we've got you in attendance today, would you mind opening up with a prayer?
I'll ask you everything. You are. Yeah, absolutely. Let's pray, y'all. Father, we come to you this morning and, Lord, just thank you. What a beautiful day that you've given us as we, Lord, as you allowed us to wake up and see this awesome creation that you made for us to enjoy. We don't take it lightly. We just want to say thank you for that. Lord, just thank you for all that you do for us each and every day. So many times we get remiss and, Lord, just bypass the day and don't even put any thought into what you do for us. Just every minute of the day. And we just want to take just a moment, pause this morning, and just tell you thank you. And mostly, but thank you for loving us. Thank you for sending your Son, Jesus, to die on the cross so that, Lord, so that folks like us will one day be able to settle the right side of the Father. We just thank you so much for that. We don't take it lightly. I ask a special blessing this morning that the, Lord, that the men and women that run this county day in and day out, Lord, would continue to, Lord, just to continue to do what they do every day and make this a great place for us to raise our families and raise our children and, Lord, to work and, Lord, just to thrive. We are so thankful that we have what we have here. There's a lot of people in this world, a lot of people in this country, that only wish that they could have a portion of what you've given us. So we thank you for that. And all these things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right, thank you, Mr. Word. I think Ms. Dindys told me that we have nothing in public comments, so I would assume. I don't have my list.
Yeah.
I got you. Mr. Cobb, good morning. She had just walked up to me and said, "We have nobody in public comments." It's just curveball, curveball, curveball she throws me. So, and she knows I can't hit curveball, so I just keep missing. Good morning.
Good morning, how y'all doing? We started the mosquito season back in April. I always wait till about first of June to come see y'all, so I have something to say. Don't have much to say so far. It's started out pretty good. Our traps are staying low. We've been doing a lot of spraying, a lot of larvicide and trying to stay ahead of it, so those traps stayed low all season. Had no complaints, no problems. Everything's been going good so far. Have y'all had any complaints or questions?
Got nothing yet.
All I get is people asking when we're gonna start. I say, well, they've already started. I sent you a message, they started. They just done it at night when you're not around, I guess.
Yeah, we get that a lot. A lot of people, you know, "Are y'all spraying?" Yeah, but we spray in the evenings from seven to midnight. Depending on which side of the zone we start, depends on which side we pass your house. So.
Are you think, do you think they're up any or, I mean, what I'm getting, mosquitoes, I've not had, I don't think, either you're doing a great job or they're just not as bad right now.
No, we're doing a great job. It's a little bit of both. I'll take a little credit for it, but, you know, we start in April to stay ahead of them. That's when they start out. They start out small and they build up. Usually from about mid-June to about mid-September is the really height of the season with the peak in July. We are seeing some increased numbers, but not high yet. And that's one of the reasons we start so early is, you know, preemptive. We get out there and we start spraying. If we can kill the adults that are around, they don't breed. And then we get the larvicide in there. And I'll be honest, we kill a lot more larvicide than we do spraying. Because there's millions in the water and, you know, only thousands fly. So, but we get out there ahead of them and try to keep them down rather than wait till they're high and try to beat them back down. That's always a losing proposition. Every time we've started a new contract late in the season, every, you know, all year long, we're double spraying just trying to beat them back down. So, right now, it's a little bit of both. They haven't really hit their peak. And one thing most people don't understand is with the rains we've been having, I think more rain, more mosquitoes. That's actually not true. It's when the rains stop and the water starts concentrating down, getting smaller, and they start fighting over resources. That's when they explode. So, if we can get a good rain shower about once a week, we'll be good all year long.
Yeah, I remember saying that last year, yeah. So, that's good, good deal.
Any other questions? All right, thank y'all.
Great, thanks, Brandon. Thank you for your time. Item four, old business. Board wishes to entertain a motion for approval on items A and B. A minute approval. So, motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a light sign. Item five, consent agenda. Board wishes to entertain a motion on consent agenda.
Motion.
So, motion by Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion?
I just have one question. What do we do to In Avalon different than we normally do?
I'm looking to see where you're talking about, In Avalon.
Well, we got some damages we're having to pay for. What happened?
So, I think there was multiple. Go ahead, Mike.
We had a road bump up over there when we were trying to pave, come apart. We had some car damage up there.
Some damage to vehicles, damage to mailboxes. So, it's been a joint effort between us and the pavers, I guess the asphalt company, I guess would be the right word, on fixing it.
They're paying some of it.
Some of it they're paying, some of it we're paying. Some of it was us, some of it was him.
We had to dig the base up and put new dirt down and everything in this subdivision, so.
We had two streets over there that probably weren't built the way they should have been when they were put down. So, when they ripped through them, base layers broke, so. All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a light sign? That'd be me. I'll vote no on the consent agenda. Item six, Ms. Caroline Gilbert. She's not here. Good morning. Well, come on up. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you today?
I'm good, how are y'all?
Good.
All right, on A, we're requesting reimbursement from the county for $297.33, and this is for the funds submitted in the collections.
Okay. Board wishes to entertain a motion for item A.
Aye.
All right, so motion by Mr. Calhoun. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a light sign. It's item B.
All right, next one is for authority to publish notice in the Rankin County 2020 tax bill to be held on August 29.
Most approved.
So, motion approved by Mr. Morrison. Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a light sign. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item seven, Mr. Solomon. Good morning.
Good morning. Just one item, petition to change the assessment, 2021 real property assessment.
So, motion by Mr. Bishop. Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a light sign. Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Item number eight, Ms. Herring. Good morning. I'm good, thank you.
This morning, I'm requesting approval of copier contracts with Rico for the jail supervisor's office in the SO Training Center.
This is the board wishes to entertain a motion for item A. Motion by Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a light sign. Thank you, Ms. Herring.
You got anything? You got anything? Anything coming up that we're looking at? Anything? Nothing?
Bids, too.
Yeah.
Like we did last time, we got authority to advertise. On June 30th, we are opening term bids for six months for the asphalt placement and crack sealing. And that'll kind of cover us over until asphalt we do in December. The precast bridge, those expire August 31st, but Mike's just gonna let those lapse and not have that bid from September through the end of December. So, we, and then we'll pick it up with the other commodity bid in December.
As you know, with all this going on, with prices, everything.
Yeah, it's been a little crazy, a little hectic. The only thing I know, wash gravel right now on our aggregates and stuff, that's the only one that they're not honoring. Still get clay gravel right now. Some other stuff's on there they get. Mike's having a hard time getting the number 89, but we're, I'm gonna look on state contract when I get back and do that.
Well, y'all staying really in touch with one another keep us, keep us all even.
We're trying to keep it going.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Ms. Herring.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine, Mr. Harrison. Good morning.
Good morning. Roadwork accomplished and scheduled.
All right, so motion approved by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a light sign. Item B, Mr. Harrison.
Be approved AT&amp;T utility permit on Holly Bush Road to be installed between Clark Creek and Rodeo Drive. But what I'd like to do is get y'all's approval when we hold it until Craig gets all his stuff done.
Good luck.
Yeah. Motion.
All right, so motion approved by Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a light sign.
Request approval of ceasefire, utility permit, construct fiber-optical loan grants for District 2.
Most approved.
There's a motion approved by Mr. Bishop. Second by Mr. Morrison. Further discussion? Just, I don't know if it's ceasefire, AT&amp;T, who it was, but here we go back into the boring issues. So, we cut water lines on Thursday. So, we shut down water in two different neighborhoods over at the reservoir in, I believe it's Magnolia Trail and... So, there's three people at Hachey Woods. There's Camilla Trail, Magnolia's the last one. What's the middle one?
Red Bud.
Red Bud, thank you, Harrison. See how old I've gotten? I can't even remember streets at the reservoir anymore.
So, on one day, they cut two?
Well, they cut the main one that feeds both of them. So, and we can see whether it was PRVs not marking it properly or whatever utility company it was, but the main issue was the people didn't have water for two days. So, that's about the second big one they've cut in a while, so.
It was AT&amp;T.
Thank you.
Are they, are they locating them?
Well, this one wasn't located properly.
This one wasn't located. Those three subdivisions are fed kind of through the middle of them, through the woods. They marked one beside the road, but didn't mark the feeder coming through the woods and they pushed the feeder. But the problem was that they couldn't find where to cut it off at.
Well, so, so really on their part, I mean, it wasn't marked.
Right.
Even though they cut it, yeah.
Yeah.
That's kind of, yeah.
There's really more of, uh, eight more waters.
Yeah, it was a PRV problem.
Well, and, but here's, here's the...
Because they marked, they marked their own waters.
People were out watering.
Here's, here's the thing. It doesn't matter who misses it.
That's right.
It's us.
That's right.
At the end of the day, it's David Cross.
My phone is the one that's loading it up.
Hundred percent correct. So, it doesn't matter if Putin hit it. We get it, so. All right, Ms. Harrison.
D to authorize renewal professional service contract.
Hang on, I think I still gotta go vote, I'm sorry. I got, I lost my temper for a second. Blood pressure went up, I forgot where I was at. Item C, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a light sign. Now, item D, Mr. Harrison.
Authority renewed professional service contract with Kim Pro Service LLC to advocate road right-of-ways authorized by the board president.
Make motion for it.
So, motion approved by Mr. Calhoun.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion?
Is this getting us another year? Is that what this is?
Yes, we just do it, do it in the summertime is all we do.
So, are you good with the job they're doing?
Yes, sir. It seems to be working. What I've learned is, is where we've repeated the application twice, it's holding back now. You know, you got to get some of that vegetation down and then come back and retrieve it again. But once you do that second treatment, it seems to be holding pretty good.
Well, they need to do some more treatments on old fannin then.
Okay. All right.
Well, but, but...
I kind of keep them off, I kind of keep them off old fannin, but we can get them on there.
It's probably, probably years since they've been there.
Then you're gonna have them complaining that they sprayed it.
Here, they did.
Yeah.
Better than I get when the grass is too high.
I'd go ahead and spray that some again, man.
But while I'm up here, just...
After they need to burn it down.
Just what Jared was talking about, yes, we are having some issues right now getting some material. I mean, parts is just about impossible to get. Materials getting, rock is getting to be a monster to get right now. I mean, I've called every plant. Don't know how long we're gonna be able to run.
What kind of rock?
Any kind of rock, any kind of limestone.
Well, you got a very good stockpile out there.
Yeah, but it won't, it won't, that even, that won't even touch what we really plan to do.
Is that chip seal material you have?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I've got, like, 6,000, 7,000 tons of one material, but I have, of number seven, but I have no 89s.
What is that for?
It's where we come back and seal the top of it, make it quieter and smoother. And, uh...
What you gonna do?
I mean, we're waiting on barges, but, I mean, they told me a month ago it'd be here two weeks ago.
What I'm saying, we're not gonna...
Well, we, I mean, we're gonna reach out on state contract and see if there is a vendor I found the other day in Meridian, Jerry, that has some rock that can probably keep us going for a little bit.
State contract prices probably still higher though, aren't they? Higher than our...
I imagine it's gonna fluctuate toward the elevation stuff if I've got a feeling that I'm right there and would give a second.
The state can monkey with fuel surcharges and stuff like that that we can't on our bid process. So, they probably are slightly higher to account for fuel costs.
Well, how does that gonna affect, Bridget? I'm just curious. I mean, how are we gonna be able to, I guess, bid it?
Well, if it's on, if it's on state contract, I mean, it's, I mean, we can just do a PO.
You don't have to bid state contract. You can purchase directly off of it.
Right.
Now, if our vendor had it, we were supposed to stick with that, but if he can't supply it, he's the only one right now that has that bid. But we have talked about kind of doing something like the MDOTs, gonna try to put that scale and there's something to help out. We're gonna really work on the bid before we go up in the decent.
The point being, if we advertise on the front end that the bid will include some sort of accounting for fuel surcharge and we tell everybody that on the front end, then we're good. The problem is, we're working off a bid where we never said anything about tanking on a fuel surcharge. We can't do that. So, you gotta tell it in advance and it's gotta be bid that way. So, we will have an opportunity to structure our term bid, so maybe we will get some local guys more interested because we can account for fuel surcharge.
Uh, the one other thing while I'm up here, Daniel, and then I will...
Hang on, so, I don't know if I voted for item D.
Yes.
We did vote for it?
Yes, we did.
Uh, wanted to kind of check with y'all and see what y'all thought about us going four tens the way this fuel's done got.
Us going what?
Four tens for a short time for the way the fuel's got. I mean, we're burning $6,000 worth of fuel a day right now out of the road.
Yeah, if we can get it done then, I guess.
Yeah, I think you just gotta make adjustments week by week.
I mean, just see how, until this fuel levels off, see what we can do.
You know, I had a trucker this morning at my shop was telling me that somewhere they're talking about, uh, I don't know where that came in, they're talking about $6.
I've talked to my fuel people and they're anticipating that. Well, this is over with.
That's what you're saying.
I mean, I'm good with it.
Hey, do you have a...
I ain't crazy about it. It's like, we're not gonna have issues on the fifth day?
Well, we're gonna have issues, Jay. I mean, my secretaries are still gonna be at work. We're still gonna be operating. I mean, I'm still gonna be, I'm still gonna be at work, you know, uh...
Here was my thing though, on that, instead of just going four tens Monday through Thursday, then just flip it. Just don't run everybody on Friday. You can stagger your schedule to where you still got a crew out hitting things that pop up on Friday.
The only problem with that, Daniel, I agree, I've thought about that. Problem is, it takes everybody I got to operate one day because you don't ever know who's gonna take annual leave, be off that day. We're shorthanded right now. I mean, we miss a truck driver, truck drivers off the day, we ain't got no spare to fill it. I mean, we've got to adjust to every crew we've got to make it happen right now. I've thought about that. It's not a big deal one way or the other. I just wanted to bring it to y'all's attention.
How much money does that save you?
About $6,000 a day.
So, a Friday, so...
Yeah, just, just on fuel costs.
$25,000 a month.
Well, we're burning somewhere around, about right at 3,000 gallons a week right now.
So, you're thinking Monday through Thursday or Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday? What are your...
Monday through Thursday, you know, may shift it if it look like rain gonna be in here on Monday, I may shift it to Tuesday, Tuesday through Friday. You know, it'd be just a, be a call deal. I don't wanna bring them in and work them 10 hours and it rains 10 hours, you know.
Well, that's one thing to say, um, they may have to just understand, be flexible. We're gonna have a rain spell.
That's right.
And we, they don't, sure, they're gonna be on call in case we have something bad.
Well, we gonna have, I mean, what I'm gonna do is put a crew, if we go this, I'm gonna put a crew on call for that Friday and weekend. And then that way, if we have an emergency, when I say emergency, a tree in the road.
Right.
Animal burial, you know. Something doesn't happen to the road and traffic going, you know, something like that, but...
Well, what I'm getting at, you may be somewhat flexible in the, because if it's gonna have a rainy spell there, they...
That's right.
And then it, they may, that'd be the day they take off rather than the, uh, the Friday. Maybe, it may be raining Monday, Tuesday, come back for Friday.
How are the guys gonna get their hours? Work 10 hours.
They're gonna work 10 hours, yeah.
So, really, we're gonna be spending the extra fuel for the extra two hours a day?
Hopefully, if I understand what he's saying, when they go out on the job.
We're gonna be there.
They'll be there. They won't be coming back, bringing everything back here and then tomorrow.
I think he's talking about really the travel, back and forth on Friday.
Back to that same job.
I mean, Friday, they won't be nothing, but probably...
Well, it's the same way.
Three, three pickups, cranks up, you know.
Yeah, 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 so on Friday, you wouldn't be coming back.
Or something.
That's what he's basically saying.
Probably 6,000 gallons.
You're probably right.
But I just, it was just something we've been looking at. Just gonna throw it out there and see what y'all thought about it.
I mean, I wouldn't mind trying it, just see what happens. I mean, we can adjust it back whenever we want.
I'd be okay with trying it through summer and...
Try it, but I don't know if it's gonna work.
I know a lot of construction...
We still got a lot of work orders out there still need to be done.
Well, however, if we see that we having big problems with three days, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and people aren't getting service like they had been, we'll have to relook at it.
Yeah, and I mean, we're gonna monitor and make sure we're, we're doing more work in them 10 hours a day too, you know.
Well, keep up the work order, I mean, keep up with them. That, you know, I see there are a lot of work orders coming in this time of year for sure.
Would it be any benefit, Mike, to hire, like, subcontractors, bush hogs on these roads and put you on something else?
You know, it might, you know, Brad, I mean, I think we got to look at that for the near future. There's a few things we gotta look at for the near future. I mean, we gotta look at contractors, we got to look at getting more people to be able to handle this and try to figure out how to hire more skillset people. I mean, we're just, we're not getting no applications. I mean, we're just, we're just not getting them. I mean, we're hiring some guys that don't know nothing that, I mean, but far as, just like I've got a guy that's 30 years, 30 years with me, four minutes retired. You just don't replace that knowledge overnight. I really ain't got a guy right now in my fleet because we've done pulled and prided so much to put in that place right now, you know. And trying to find that guy is about hard to do right now.
Yeah.
I don't know, subcontractor way to go because everybody I talk to is having this problem. But it's something, it's something we need to look at.
All right, so from Mike's direction, what do y'all wanna do on the hour deal? Leave it the same or...
I think y'all said you wanted to go for it, so...
I mean, I'd say I'm okay with trying it, but I mean, I kind of want the board in agreeance with it.
I'm not too sure with it either, really, because I'm, I see work orders we got and then you got you, you pulling crews off to, to work on your, um, getting prepped for the, you know, chip sealing, whatever. So, that makes our work orders fall behind. And so, missing out a day, it's gonna be like, gonna even make that even worse. Because I know part of the problem right now with work orders, I know you got crews trying to stay ahead of things.
They do, I mean, that's...
That's what you said in the past, where you can't get some work orders, we got the crews out doing this.
That's right.
So, I'm wondering...
I mean, that's what it's taking, everybody is taking us to do everything we do. And it may be that I gotta look in and bring a crew in on a Friday to catch up on some things. That may be.
What we do, Jared, I don't know.
Maybe not the whole summer, but do it a month and see what happens.
See what happens.
Well, you know, you're gonna be behind on your work order then.
Well, if we are, I'd be first one in line to say.
But you know what I'm saying? He's got them doing this, so you can't help it.
But you're getting extra two hours a day.
But you two get the same hour.
It's hard. I mean, right now, and that's why I hadn't complained too much, it's hard to get little things done. Because they, I guess, don't have the manpower and that type of stuff. But, I mean, little things that maybe don't mean a whole lot to everybody, but it means a whole lot to some people.
Oh, it means a lot to that individual, yeah.
We can't, we can't get attention to.
Those little things are the big things.
And I don't want that to get worse. Uh, if it makes it better because they're out there 10 hours, I would be willing to look, let's say, a month and see what, how we feel about it, the calls that come in, the people that call us, you know. If, if we're not doing our job in a month, then I think we should go back.
I agree with you.
So, what are your hours gonna be?
Be from 6:30 to 5:00. Try to get an early start. The only thing that concerns me about the four-ten J's right now is the heat we're coming up on. I mean, that's 10 hours out there. It gets pretty tough after, you know, eight hours. That's where my concern is right now with going to four tens is, is the heat.
What's the guys taking, you got any pushback, you got any pushback or support?
They do either or, whatever we...
They don't care one way or the other?
My guys always like to get off.
I mean, they'd rather be, they'd rather be off on Fridays, yeah. They'd rather be off, but...
Well, they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to show that productivity those four days.
I mean, if on Monday, you're gonna have half of them not coming in.
Well, and that's, that's one thing we're gonna monitor, Jay. I mean, if we, we see and everybody's taking all, you know, uh, four-day-a-week work.
I'd vote to give it a chance, but I, I have a pretty sneaky suspicion that in 30 days, we're gonna be...
Yeah, and I may be done changing before it even does that, you know. So, I see it's not working, but I just did not want to do this without talking to y'all and let's see what we can do with it. All right?
Thank you.
Yes, sir, appreciate it.
Item 10, Mr. Parker. I was going pretty good on the agenda.
Yeah, we were.
We dove for Mr. Harrison. I think you can catch me up.
I'm gonna try, Mr. President. Uh, item A, the only item we have today is discussion of potential action on the Andrew Jackson Circle Improvement Project. That's a District One project. You should have in front of you the certified bid tab for the project. We had two bidders. Hemp Hill Construction Company was the low bidder at $766,322.
How much did this start off at?
This, it started off, well, our estimate at the bid time was 650. So, originally, and the air gas is, this air gas is contributing to this 350,000.
Oh, yeah, that's a difference.
So I think it's about three hundred thousand above the original, the very initial project.
That we've been talking about for six years, five years. And had a hangover railroad all those years.
Yes, correct.
And I think the railroads already starting to put some of their stuff in.
My understanding was that they were prepared to move forward with their part of the project. M-Dot Rails is contributing somewhere around one point two million dollars for the rail crossing improvements, the crossing guards, the lights, and some other things. And so, this is a, this is distinctively a combination project involving four parties.
And Railroad actually, actually donated a few feet of some property.
Yes, sir.
You know, some there, there.
How much did we have in the bu, in the, uh, budget for this?
The, this was in the bond?
Yeah, how much?
Was it three hundred?
Originally, it was a hundred and seventy-five.
Hundred and seventy-five.
Hundred and seventy, yeah.
Right.
Holy cow, six hundred thousand more? Where are we getting the money from?
Well, no, 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 the, the, the bond would taken out, had taken out the air gas, so you take three fifty out of that.
No, two fifty for us.
Yeah.
Additional two fifty.
See, see that?
Be on top of what we had in the bu, in the bond.
On top of the bond.
So where are we pulling it?
If you can hold off for just a little bit, we'll talk about it.
Cause I think they're going to the bond.
Okay. Well, it's a potential action, so.
So we'll just table this till we get through with the bond stuff.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Alright, remind me to come back to that, James. Put that in your notes. Mr. Slay?
Yes.
I've been trying to get to you. Item number eleven. Setting public hearings, and we see A, B, C, D, and E are all set for the thirteenth, so the board wishes to wrap all three of those, all four of those, all five of those together?
I'll make a motion to set all.
See, I bet my numbers aren't, I'm not, I'm not there today, Bishop. My concentration gets broke.
I'm good, there's not one of them in District Four.
I got a motion to set off.
I'll say.
Alright, so a motion by Mr. Calhoun to set items A through E for the public hearings on thirteen June. Second by Mr. Gaines.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a light sign. So now, Mr. Slay, we're gonna move you to item F.
Item F, yes, sir. That's a long, uh, agenda item right there. I, I don't intend to read it to you. Uh, let me give you the, the skinny, the Cliff's Note version of that. Uh, this is a Human Resource Agency issue. You guys inherited Human Resource Agency after it lost its board members. And so Keith, uh, has been appointed to serve in, as a, uh, an interim director for that agency. So that's why you're hearing about this and having to take action. They don't have a way to take action themselves. Uh, this is kind of a holdover deal. They have a program where they provide, um, for indigent, uh, folks in the county, they provide assistance for various things, utilities and other kinds of things. And where residents qualify for assistance because their homes do not have adequate heating and cooling, uh, they, there is a grant program that the federal government runs and pushes through Human Resources, uh, or did, uh, that allows for the installation of appropriate HVAC type of equipment. In that, in that particular, in this particular case, the agency has to follow grant requirements in order to run that program and to qualify folks and then to pay for those services. In this case, they did not follow the protocols. And when the State Department of Health came, our State Department of Human Services came back and said, we looked back at your paperwork, it's not adequate. They went through a process of getting that all investigated, and they determined on two occasions, you failed to properly follow the protocol and it cannot be fixed. And so, we need to take the funding that you guys now have, which is from Human Resources. We need to, uh, repay the grant program for those funds. And then you need to authorize me, and that's in here, to, on your behalf now, as the director, as the agency, you need to authorize me to pursue the bonds that bond the employees that didn't follow the protocol and try to recover those funds from the bonding entities.
How much are we talking about?
About fifteen thousand dollars total, Steve. It's definitely worth pursuing. Am I right on the numbers, in that, right in that range? And so that's what this whole thing is. You're authorizing us to go ahead and take care of the issue so that we settle up with Human Services, the state agency. And then you're authorizing me to pursue the bonds so that we can see if we can recover those funds.
Motion approved.
Alright, so a motion to approve item F by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a light sign. Item F passes. Item G, Mr. Slay.
Item G will be related to your Juvenile Detention Facility, uh, and, uh, your youth court services. These are programs that are administered, again, by private third parties and by federal government agencies. They fund positions that work within the context of the youth court facility under the direction of Judge Broom. These are memoranda of agreements or memoranda of understanding that we need to execute on behalf of the county and the, your youth court program that provides for both the positions to be funded and for the use of grant funding for that, uh, program. We do not intend for this to be ultimately a cost to the county, except what is budgeted for that purpose. So this is just a kind of a cleanup and getting some MOUs in place.
Okay. So the board wishes to entertain a motion for item G.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a light sign. Item H, Mr. Slay.
Item H is on behalf of a tax collector. This is related to our online tax sale. It's a process that we use. We use a third party vendor called Govies, and they provide the services related to the online tax program. I think we've been doing this now for about four years, am I right about that? So it started back under Ms. Judy and has proceeded forward. Uh, our, anecdotally, we don't have issues with our online tax program. It runs smoothly. Uh, I think I can say that we don't get any complaints from folks that use the service. And so it's effectively running. It's, it's, it's working well for us. There is one aspect of the online tax program that has been kind of a thorn in our side, and it has to do with how we take payments for the various tax sale parcels. Uh, and there is this period of time where the payments are in suspense or held, and it does not work within our system at all. It creates headaches for our folks, and there's a lot of policing and oversight that we do not have the personnel to do. That's not a, that's not putting anybody down. It's just that we got enough to do without having to do this extra legwork. Govies provides that service so that it's more seamless for the user. And for us, for a small extra fee, they're already getting paid one point two-five percent per transaction. This would be two percent per transaction, and they handle all the payments. We think it's a good deal. I've looked at the agreement.
Not an additional two.
No, sir.
Total.
A total of two, total of two. So it's a zero point seven five increase to handle all of the payment transactions, which takes that off of us. So it, it's a heck of a deal, and the agreement I've already reviewed and I'm satisfied with.
Alright, so the board wishes to entertain a motion for item H.
Make a motion, will you approve?
A motion approved by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a light sign. Item I.
Item I is kind of interesting, um, uh, in a nerdy way for board lawyers. Uh, we are acknowledging receipt of a court order that we received from Senior Circuit Judge Steve Ratcliffe, that, uh, that relocates our official public notice posting board from the original nineteen twenty-five Rankin County Courthouse to the main lobby of the Rankin County Justice Center at two fifteen East Government Street, Brandon, effective September one of this year. Alright, so here's the situation. Since probably nineteen twenty-five, when, uh, Mr. Overstreet, the architect's courthouse was built in Italianate architecture and became our courthouse on the courthouse grounds because the prior courthouse burned to the ground, uh, we have had that as the Rankin County Courthouse for official public outcry, land sale, execution sales, any other types of forced sale of real property in Rankin County, that's where you do it. In fact, uh, to this day, foreclosures are still conducted at the southeast front door of the original courthouse. Under Mississippi law, those kinds of sales at public outcry are to be conducted at the quote courthouse of the county. Well, our original nineteen twenty-five courthouse has not functioned as a courthouse, actually since two thousand and eighteen, when we moved the justice court to our new transfer building. And so that is not a courthouse anymore. Uh, recently, we emptied out every other aspect of county government that was in that facility at that time. It's now been relocated to our community service building, which, by the way, you have an opportunity to be at today at two o'clock for a, a viewing of your new community services facility. This leaves us in a, a little bit of a pickle in that we are continuing to provide for a place of public outcry type sales or forced sales of land at a place that is not the courthouse of the county. And so Judge Ratcliffe and I have worked together to come up with a plan to address that. Uh, because there are certain foreclosure-related or other forced sale types of situations that are already scheduled and in process, we need a little bit of a delay in your action to relocate the place. And where they are currently scheduled to conduct, we think about ninety days is enough time for the word to get out. All of your new sales for foreclosure purposes, for public outcry purposes, are gonna happen at the Justice Center now, uh, at the address of the Justice Center. And so you need to conform all of your later sales after September one so that they are conducted at the right place. And we need to move our public notice board. I don't know if you guys were aware, but literally there are notices of sale and other public notifications that get tacked on a board that is physically located at the original courthouse in that southeast lobby. We need to move that board to the Justice Center on, on September one. And so Ms. Jess and I have been working on this as well. Her office, uh, constantly goes to the public board and constantly posts things on the board. So we need the public to be aware, that's where the posting board is gonna be located from now on.
Alright.
So we cleared it with the judge, we cleared it with the sheriff. Uh, thankfully, I think Brian's satisfied that we've got room in the lobby of the Justice Center to handle all this, and the public can get access to it. We cleared it with Ms. Becky and made sure that cert clerk staff was okay with it. And so everybody that really has something to say about this is on board with it, and your circuit judge has entered an order to that effect so that it's clear that both this board and the judges are in agreement that this is what we need to do.
Okay.
So we think this is the right way to handle this situation. I'm asking you for authority to move the board on September one and for authority to issue public notice in the newspaper about this transition and to pay for those costs.
Alright, so the board wishes to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Alright, so a motion by Mr. Calhoun. Second by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a light sign. Item number seven, Mr. Hicks.
Mr. President, can I, can I interrupt just a moment, uh, and address something that came up late in the day on Friday? Uh, and just make the board aware of it. I'm not asking for any specific action at this time, just to make you aware. We were expecting today to have a visit from a citizen whose name is Mary Warren. Ms. Warren, Jared will remember.
Oh, yeah.
Is, um, is a constituent in District One who's off of South Pearson, has property off of South Pearson, uh, who came before the board, um, back in May. Uh, and I think it was the first meeting and may have been, may have been the middle, I think it was the mid-month meeting, May the sixteenth, came to the board, uh, and accused the board of killing her family, or trying to kill her family because of issues related to drainage off of South Pearson Road. I don't know if y'all recall that.
No, yeah.
Um, the next day, May seventeenth, and it had already been scheduled, by the way, when she showed up here to talk to you about it, uh, we had a site visit already scheduled for the next day. And so we conducted that site visit. Uh, Jared, myself, uh, Mr. Parker, Mr. Harrison, we're all there. We met with the lady, we walked her property, we walked the area of the right-of-way, both sides of South Pearson. We tried our best to figure out what is going on here that could be problematic for her property. Uh, and the best we could come up with was that there may be some small amount of what I'll call road drainage that, uh, that could be addressed, can be addressed in the public right-of-way. And we discussed at length with her and amongst ourselves what sort of limited, narrowly tailored sorts of activities that we could employ that would help to address some of the road drainage. The, the reality is, and it was apparent to everybody who was there, I think with the exception of the property owner, uh, that her issues are not with road drainage. They are with, just simply with the way that that property drains, period. Um, unrelated to what's happening with, uh, stormwater at the road. Um, the, actually, the road tilts away from her property. So there's a crest, uh, on the right-of-way that requires all of the stormwater that is, uh, that could be impacting her house. It's actually moving in the opposite direction of her house. And so it's, it's obvious to everyone that reviewed that, that there's very little, if anything, that the county can do to, ultimately to address the issues that she's complaining about primarily. But we committed what we can do in the right-of-way, we will do. And we left there, I think, at least four of us left that conversation with the understanding, we're gonna go look and see and study what it is that we can and should do to properly account for the road drainage as best we can and to prevent at least that part of the road drainage from impacting her residents.
That make her happy?
I, I, I don't know. I think it, it should have.
It, it did at that point.
It did at that moment.
But by that afternoon.
Yeah.
She hadn't heard anything back, so she was already making phone calls.
That's right. So that's why I wanted to address with you guys. It's that.
One thing though, now, we are, we are gonna try to do something. I do see, we, we all agree that, uh, big rains, no rain, there's not a place for that water to get out of our ditch instead of coming over and running down and could create some of this problem. So we did agree that we try to do something there.
Yes, sir. In the right-of-way, we're gonna try to do everything we can to redirect as much of that road water as we can so that it doesn't impact her residents.
Really, it's just rainwater.
Yes, it's just rain.
Cause very little road water can get to there.
That's right.
Except on that, uh, east side.
Yes, sir.
A little bit, that, that, that wasn't anything much.
So we left there, Brad, to answer your question, we left there with the understanding that county's gonna try to do what it can inside the right-of-way. Uh, Ms. Warren, um, called literally that afternoon to the board office and, uh, began the conversation by saying, my supervisor did not even bother to show up to meet with us, to meet with me. That's the way we started the conversation. And it's gotten just worse from there.
She's called me, she's called me, uh, I guess last week, a week before, well, anyway, she's called me. I told her the same thing. She just thinks it's supposed to be something done right now. And, uh, I mean, she don't understand that we're supposed to be evaluating some things. She wants at least something done to that big hole that's washed in there, cause she can't sleep at night, afraid her house is gonna fall in.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I don't think we're dealing with, um, a, a typical situation.
Was it Jay, was it Jay that was supposed to be there?
Apparently Jay was supposed to be there.
Oh, I was supposed to be there?
I'm not really sure.
That's the problem, I inherited from Jay.
So I wanna put, let me, let me put another couple of finer points on this right quick, just to give you guys some, some data. I have a printout of the telephone call record.
Really?
From Ms. Warren to the Rankin County Board Office. Since May the fourth, we have received twenty-one calls from Ms. Warren. Since the meeting, since the meeting on the seventeenth with Ms. Warren, we have received fourteen phone calls.
And I've seen one, I know, so that's fifteen.
One a day.
This, calls, calls other than to the board office are not recorded here. These are to the board office. Okay? So.
Janice too.
Janice, Janice has been ground zero, uh, and, and let me just say this. When, when, when patience, when the patience of Janice Dandy dealing with constituents runs out, that is a significant situation. She is able to patiently handle constituents. I've seen it now for, for fifteen years. So I've watched her be able to navigate difficult constituents. Has gotten now to the point of abuse and threats. And it's, it's not something that our staff needs to be dealing with. The, the lady is not capable of understanding, apparently, when we say we are going to do what we can legally in our right-of-way. And we are gonna work to make sure that when we do that, we don't cause problems for other property owners or make the problem worse unwittingly. So it needs a little bit of time for us to study how we wanna go about doing it. So I wanted you guys to be aware of this abuse. And I'm, I'm asking you to consider being ready to address the abuse of the phone calls and the threats and the language and the other issues that we're starting to see.
She's been hard language, she's been dicey, but it's not been rough for me.
She started this weekend in my office, Jared. Calling my office pretty well, what Craig said, sum it up, threatening, pretty direct, and threatening to come over there and come up in the office and make that the point, I thought the lady's to call nine one one if she showed up.
I believe, uh, let's see, who you got in that office? I might would just say, well, why don't you bring it on down here?
Well, we're the guys who are.
Oh, I didn't realize that part, yeah, I mean, she's so persistent, but her deal is, she doesn't realize, she thinks if, if the engineer's gonna do some evaluations and analysis on things, she thought that would be done then and you could start doing something tomorrow. And I think what she wants is a big pile of, which, let me ask, well, maybe not now. If we got a big pile of dig out, maybe we gonna dump it in that big hole. But I think that'd be probably saying we're gonna try to fix it in that effort. But, uh, part of her problem is water's coming down the driveway. And every bit of drainage, that's really, I wanna try to stop. What we have, rainfall that fills up the ditch and can't move, is coming over and probably running down and creating part of this problem at this wash she's talking about. But also, she has a tin roof with no gutters, and it drains right there, too.
Yeah.
How long she lived there in that area?
Thirty, thirty-something years, she said.
It's been a ongoing issue.
Right. Persistence, we can deal with, by the way. We, we have seen persistence, and there's an appropriate way to go about doing that, and we know how to deal with that situation. What we have a hard time dealing with is abusive and repetition to the point of nausea, where it's just constant.
Yeah.
Constant. Uh, and so what I'm asking you guys to be, uh, consider, to consider is that at some point we may need to ask for an intervention of some kind here. I think you know where I'm headed with that. Uh, and so I, I just wanted to make you aware of that and, and give you the background for why we would ratchet it up like that. We don't bring this kind of thing to you until it gets to this point. And so we think it's there.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Slay.
Thank you.
Item seven, Mr. Hicks. Now, I'm sorry, item twelve. You see how messed up I am today? It's not on key. When Janice threw me off early, which has not been right, so I'm gonna try to refocus and reboot. Item twelve, Mr. Hicks, good morning.
Good, good morning, gentlemen. Uh, item A is, uh, we thought we were finished, but, uh, we had missed a payout.
Okay.
We didn't, we just received a payout for the Community Services Building, and we need authority to issue that check.
Alright.
Amount of four thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and ten cents.
Alright. We wish to entertain a motion for item A.
I will.
A motion by Mr. Gaines. Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the light sign. Item B, Mr. Hicks.
Item B is acceptance of our fiscal year 22 HIDA sub-grantee cooperative agreement between Bureau of National Athletics and the Gulf Coast High Intensity or HIDA and Rankin County District Attorney's Office and authority for the sheriff to execute those documents.
All right.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Mr. Calhoun.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the light sign. Item C, Mr. Hicks.
Item C is the approval to accept MDQ Non-Confidential Waste Assistance Grant in the amount of $49,303.79. Authority to execute those documents.
All right. So a motion by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the light sign. Item D, Mr. Hicks.
All right. Item D is the authority to enter into a MOU with GovDeals. And this will allow us on our level to dispose of things that we would normally throw away. We have a lot of filing cabinets, we're just trying to clean up. This is no cost to the county and it will allow us to put stuff online and, and get rid of it.
All right, so a motion approved by Mr. Bishop for item D, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the light sign. Item E, Mr. Hicks.
Item E is, we request approval for the memorandum of agreement with the Department of Transportation and this is on our overlay of old Fannin.
All right.
Motion approved.
So a motion approved by Mr. Bishop, second by myself. Any further discussion?
What, what is our match on that?
300?
Thirty percent?
Seventy, thirty. We're getting 1.6.
It's around 700,000.
Yeah, I think it's 700,000.
About 700,000.
700? 300 sounds better.
It does.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the light sign. Item F, Mr. Hicks.
Before we get to item F, if I could just take a moment and give you guys an update. You authorized us to have a household hazardous waste pickup. That was done this past Saturday. We had about 106 participants from the county. Everyone except one person was from Rankin County that came there and dropped off. We filled up an 18-wheeler trailer plus a little bit more on the second trailer. The company that we used had their crew there, we had DEQ there. The sheriff provided some assistance and the road department, it was a well-run, well-organized effort. And I just wanna thank the citizens that brought their stuff in and disposed of it properly.
Good deal.
Good thing. Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Item F?
Item F, we have bond. All right. And let me just say, we're, we can see the finish line down the road, our bond. We'd like to have everything spent by the end of this year.
When you say year, you're talking about fiscal year, right?
Well, fiscal year, October, November.
Yeah.
Is the deadline. I wasn't here when it started, so I don't know the exact date.
Okay.
But we have some, we have some suggestions. What we did, what we've done is, is kinda narrowed it down to these are the open projects, the things that haven't been fully completed. We have some things on here that are continuing to, to be funded. And then we have some other items that we know what the, what the end result needs to be, what the end funding needs to be. We've just kinda put this together to give you an idea of what's out there, what needs to be spent. And, and just a recommendation on, on how to spend the money. So take a minute.
This is to go forward and finish out the bond?
Yes, sir.
And we only have a certain amount of time to finish out the bond, isn't it correct?
In speaking, it's, it's three years from the date, from the date of the issuance of bonds. Yes, sir. So, but from, from prior history, Steve, having the funds committed.
Right.
Is adequate.
Already.
Yeah, so it's not so much the actual expenditure, it's the commitment of the funds for purposes that can be tracked back to a bond issuance.
And, and one of the things you'll note is, is we've kinda recommended allocating more money than we have left. It boils down to, we don't know the board's desire, where to cut, what to cut, or how to replace some funding for the items that remain on. We didn't take anything off. We did not take anything off. But we had to let you know that, for example, we're pretty sure on Andrew Chapel Road, Andrew Jackson Circle and, and the Mill Creek Overlay, we're pretty sure the amounts on here will complete those jobs. Cause we, we have a, an answer. We have a definite figure on those, those jobs.
And the Mill Creek Overlay will be done in the next five days, right? I mean, it's almost, it's 90% done now.
It'll be done this week.
Yeah, it'll be finished, complete this week.
We're, we're off 750,000, roughly 744, from a couple of years, three years ago.
Three years ago and COVID and price doublings and tripleings, yes.
That's closer than I would've thought.
That's pretty good, considering.
Thirty million dollar target, I would say you've done a really good job of, of moving your bond projects and hitting your cost estimates and being efficient.
I'm making a motion, we can go with this and try to stick to it as closely as we can.
I don't think that's the whole we're looking for, is.
Well, I'll take it.
I don't know.
Worst case, we just make it up. We just make it up. I mean, run it to the line.
Right, right. We go, we go to the point where-
It's not gonna exceed 744 is what we're basing, I guess what Gaines is saying. If we're only over 745.
Yeah.
Then let it run its course. Maybe the pencil gets sharper and it's less than 745.
Yeah.
And-
Well, and like you said, everything obviously went up and we know it's got, you know, the problem.
And I'll be happy to come back to you and let you know when we're, we're out of money.
It's one time.
Give us the rest of the story. Like what projects we have outstanding to do. Or, well, for Andrew Chapel and Gunner Road, what's it gonna take to finish those out?
Well, the Andrew Chapel-
That's what you had it for Andrew Chapel, that's what I heard, it's already done.
That, that will finish Andrew Chapel.
That is the estimate to finish Andrew Chapel out.
What?
The recommended allocation, that, that is to finish Andrew Chapel out.
Is that the, is that the, I mean, is that additional from what, I mean, how much did it go over?
From-
I mean, one of the kinda borderline, you worked it out?
We started off using monies that were not in the bond.
Right.
That's right.
To pay for the properties and things like that. So it does look a little bit lopsided.
I think the bid amount was, what, how much was the original?
I mean, it's all, you get it all worked out.
Yeah.
You know, which we've already done, but that's what I always say.
What, what do we have left to finish these projects?
We have, I think it's, it's gonna be-
Eight million, 655,828.
I see that, I'm asking what above and beyond what you had on this piece of paper to finish all these projects. So are you saying Gunner Road, we're gonna be done with 4.3 million, that's it? We're gonna cover that?
No, that, the ones on, I'm sorry, I don't mean it.
Come on. I'll move over to that.
I'm just trying to get to the endo here. I mean, all right, so even Andrew Circle?
Yeah, so the, the ones on here that I'll say have, have a set ending would be Andrew Chapel.
And how much do we owe on this?
The, the 2.6 is projected to close out Andrew Chapel.
That will finish it out?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right, the Andrew Jackson Circle, the 417,098.50, that includes, that was taking the bid of 766,322, taking out the air gas, including what we already had in the bond that was remaining. That, that's the allocation to, to finish it. Now, what we don't know-
I think what Bishop was asking earlier on that, what was the initial cost of the Andrew Jackson that we did in the bond when we first put it down?
It was 175.
175.
And now it's down to 140-something. So it's 149, I think, plus the overage because of the, of the bid amount. Plus the air gas money would take us to the 766. Now, now, understand this, that, that's a construction project. And when they go out there, if they find something that we didn't know was there, I mean, we, we may-
What I'm saying, this, this number's 250 above where we originally been.
Correct, that is correct.
We think the 417, in addition to the funds we received from air gas, will complete the project.
So, so those are the only two that we really have endpoints on. Gunner, unfortunately, we only got an endpoint on Phase 1, which came in at 3.0, right at 3 million. So the, the 4324 is just what's left from the original bond amount. So Phase 2 would have to come in at 1.3. So that one, more than likely, in my opinion, will be underfunded.
By how much?
We haven't run an estimate on, on Phase 2 yet. A lot of that depends on when it happens.
So, so here's, and this won't, this won't affect me.
Gas prices.
Well, I mean, what is your explanation currently?
I, I would say it's probably gonna be around the $3 million range.
Yeah, we're gonna be short?
No, 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 that, that it'll cost, so you would have-
Two million short?
4.7.
All right.
All right, so I'm gonna say, while I'm saying this right here, cause this will come, this won't affect me because Phase 1 will probably just run out our term on this. But the problem I got with the Phase 1 side of this thing is, we're not planning on how we're gonna pay for Phase 2 and Phase 3, right? Because that's a whole different number. So at some point, another board-
We're gonna be with Phase 2.
All right, well then, Phase 2.
Right.
We're not planning on how we're gonna pay for Phase 2. So some other, the next board will have to come in with that type of decisions to figure out how they're gonna continue with. And the estimate cost of Phase 2 right now is what?
It's ballpark 3 million.
3 million dollars. So that's what I'm saying, we're gonna put that on the next board to come in and figure out how they're gonna hit, because you're not gonna be able to stop Phase 1, they'll want that finished, right? Cause you put the money into-
I hope we're not waiting on it. I hope we get started before and hope we get it.
I'm saying, I believe next, the next, the next board will have to deal with that.
I understand.
So I guess that's, that's my only reservation on that, is I feel halfway bad.
I don't really think you can wait the next board, but we, we're getting, I think Greg, you might kick in here.
Yep.
We need to closing that gap, I think, where we've been having that problem.
We, we are working feverishly to make sure that when we bid Phase 2, we have the attention of the current contractor so that they want to be a participant in Phase 2 and we won't have a mobilization cost. And that would potentially reduce the overall cost of Phase 2.
Considerably.
Yeah, and Daniel, for the bond-
There's only, what, 100,000?
Oh, no. It's-
What, what was the mobilization?
It's, can be 10% of the-
What was it though?
I don't remember what the bid was, but that varies greatly among bidders, Jay.
I mean, that ain't, that's a long way from getting us to 2 million though.
Oh, well, yeah.
We still gotta come up with some way how we gonna pay-
Well, I got a question, I got a question. What happened to the money? We had money there for it to start with.
Right.
Okay, so we're not that much over on Phase 1, I don't think, over 10%.
Well, and, and Jake, let me point out too, I'm sorry, Jared. There, there is other money already set aside from Senate bill that will cover part of that 2 million dollars. Almost half of it.
750.
There, there's Senate bill money for Gunner Road set aside.
No, that's Gunner Road extension.
That's the other side.
Yeah.
It's Gunner Road, right?
We tried to get it for Gunner Road, but they-
No, we have Gunner Road money.
No.
This was utility money.
Oh, yeah, wait, you're talking about utility.
That's what they split.
That'll cover about-
We did on Andrew Chapel.
I thought they split that.
No, it's 7, I think it's 750.
Right. They all, they all split.
No, he got, he got a million. It was 750, I think he got a million.
So there's 750 out there that's, that's not allocated yet?
Well, it's, it's Gunner Road.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, but so that'll come off that total.
It's not part of the-
Right.
Right.
Okay, all right. So that's, we're down to a million?
We're down to a million.
Okay. What about the rest of these projects?
That's why we're here. The, the, the Mill Creek Overlay that will cover it, it's done.
Right.
Well, we got the money for the Pearson, Old Pearson, we got it. The curve there, we're talking about, we got that money. It was in the bond. No, correct?
Yes. Yeah, that was, 11,000's been spent, it looks like it was right at 3, it was 3,000.
And we had, what, about 2, 3, almost 3 in the bond?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's right. So we got that. Okay, so that, that one would be covered then. And you know, like you said, all of, every project that we've ever done has always gone over that street way back in the beginning. I, I'd even mentioned why you need to hold some of that bond money. We had a little extra, hold some of it for these unexpected things. They always come up, just like Andrew Chapel and everywhere else. And, but anyway, we've not done that, so that's kinda why we're, where we are here.
So what, what about this spillway road 471?
So that, that got kicked out on that.
Yeah, so that one is an, is an LPA project and we only got one bidder and they were not within 10% of the estimate. So that, that will automatically, we're going through the process now, but it's an automatic rejection of the bid.
Because you only got one bidder?
Well, it's not, it's not- 10% over the, the rest of the bid costs.
It's not 10% of the insured estimate.
So what do we do?
That one had, just so you know, that one had $260 asphalt.
I think Mike's got a plan at some-
$257 asphalt, some up.
Yeah, ridiculous cost on it. So for the same side of that, now, part of the deal was going through that process, you had to do a lot of shoulder work and a lot of other things like that that extended that cost up to there.
Guard, had to replace a guard rail on the bridge.
That didn't need, that did need to be replaced. So for the same side of that, if we come back in with a project for Mike to be able to pick up, he can do that project probably for about 750 or so at some point. But we can figure that out in the next budget cycle or whatever, so. That's still there, to be able to finish that road deal, just not going through the LPO project, so.
So we're not getting, well, before we had a match for that. So is it not gonna be able to resubmit it and we get awarded?
I mean, not, not in the life of this bond.
We can rebid it, but with the asphalt prices where they are now, it's, your, your match is gonna be more because of the price than just doing it not through the LPA process. So your match is gonna be more than the 750, Daniel was talking about, to get it done.
Which is better, just that you save money actually.
That, that was a $750,000 project. It came, the bid was 1.6 million dollars. And I, I'll be first to admit, we didn't put $260 a ton asphalt in there when we estimated, that was, that where asphalt went crazy. So, so what happens is, if you wanna do it under that project, the county's match ends up being 1.2 to do it as an LPA project. Well, you can do it under county forces for 750, makes no sense to go through the LPA process. And the LPA folks told us that day sitting here, that overlay projects just aren't working under the LPA process right now.
So we're gonna turn that money back in?
We haven't got that.
We didn't get it.
We haven't got it.
So why, I'm just saying though, it was allocated.
It was allocated, so that, so basically, basically we could take-
I thought we were asking y'all, what do you wanna do with the money, Jay?
Well, and again, you can still take part of that in time with, we get in our new budget cycle, that can finish up that spillway road paving from Grant's Ferry on 471.
What you're talking about though, is the 389 that was the max that they were giving.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, at some point, through the MDOT process, once it's rejected, the county will have to make a decision, we're not going to rebid it, or we're going to rebid it. And if you're not going to rebid it, we'll have to go to the LPA, to the LPA and.
And basically, the thing was, what Tim and Mike was explaining to me was, if you rebid it, you cost yourself more money to do it, even on a match.
The match money comes out of cash, right?
Yep.
Our match money?
No, we matched something like, well, like spillway, spillway project.
It was intended to be, come out of the bond. The match, the match for actual construction was 389, 500, I think.
And we thought we were going to be able to use it to get it out of the bond.
And so, that's where that 440 comes from, because it had all the fees attached to it, too. So, that's, we thought our match was coming out of the bond. And that's what I'm saying, is now our match would be 1.2. Well, there's no sense, and that would come out of, the rest of that would have to come out of cash. So, you're taking 800,000 out of cash to do a job that the county can do for 750.
And that, well, and that, just like the match for spillway project, I mean, not spillway, Old Fannin project, that comes out of cash, that's 700. That matching money, or did we?
Yes, because that was, that was after the bond, yes. That was after the bond.
After the bond. No, it wasn't, it wasn't, it didn't come out. So, it came out of cash.
That was last year's.
I got you.
Cycle.
It will, to have.
Right, that match would have to come out of cash.
Right.
Yeah, I got you.
So, the last one, I guess we done the bucket, the fire department.
The 67 that's left, I mean.
I can use it.
Well, that's, I mean, that's, both those buildings, one and two, are community centers now in the county. Just renting these things out. I mean, we need something for, making wheelchair right now, it's gravel there. I mean, somebody pulls up there in a wheelchair, not going to be able to really access those buildings.
Is it going to be a voting place, too?
Well, yeah, you're going to have to make something.
I mean, it's not this week, but I mean, I'd like to have something done by November.
We anticipate for November, Jay, that we'll be looking at, at the new building, for sure. So, we'll get ahead of the legislature, but we feel strongly that that needs to happen.
Well, have to have.
I mean, right now, we're open across the road at the church, and it's not adequate parking over there. And I mean, being this is so close, and I mean, I just, I like to do a slab out in front of the fire station for the fire trucks to pull out on, and then maybe asphalt that up there around the front, or the front door, main entrance here.
Yep.
But, I mean, that's, that's more than enough money, I think, to do it, because the concrete right there is going to be around 25,000, and then whatever else.
And the last one, seems like, Dan, you were pretty split getting that Mill Creek in there.
What you mean, pretty split?
Well, I mean, originally, that wasn't a bond project. Originally, we put that emergency money in there for Pine Brook.
Yeah, which, which at the same point, we don't have a good plan on how we're going to fix that yet.
I know, but we took the emergency money that was allocated to do that, and somehow we just overlaid Mill Creek.
Well, at the same point, that was part of the agreement of the thing, so is it going to come out of that or is it going to come out of cash?
Well, I mean.
That's part of the lawsuit stuff, what I'm saying. We knew we were going to come back and finish the roads up, once we destroyed them all, to put the stuff.
Crown. Okay.
So, we were going to come out of cash or bonds, we kind of robbing Peter to pay Paulie away, so.
I just didn't remember we agreed to pay the whole subdivision.
Well, the expert forced our hand. The expert indicated in his report that there had to be a crowning of the road so that the shedding of the water worked within the confines of the new system that got installed. So, that got visited upon us, Jay. It wasn't part of what we were planning to do, but as a part of the litigation.
It was either going to come out of there or come out of cash. It's like part of the agreement on it, so.
So, we're now looking at about $2 million is what we need to come up with to finish these projects altogether.
You're adding that extra million for Gunner, what you're saying? Yeah, I think that's, I think that's close.
If we spend all the money, yes, sir.
Yeah. Y'all good with that?
Well, I mean.
I mean, I don't know about the sheriff on the animal shelter, the 400,000, I mean, that's something that we can move around or whatever.
Next year, some of this is going to, not necessarily on road, but the other parts are, yeah. Probably happen, yeah. That's it.
So, it wasn't accurate. 740 is 1.7, all right? You found other millions hidden?
Well, no, there was some other fees, you know, some other objectives we're in here to.
Hmm. All right. Now, we got it in front of us. I want to sit on it. Me. Let me think of we.
Okay. We'll be back next week.
All right.
I feel we moved on with it. We find money, we found the money, correct the other things, so we can, you know, we got money to match this and that, so. I think we need to move on and get the projects done. I mean, same way, whatever it takes to finish up Andrew Chapel, I'm there. Get it finished.
Well, just so y'all know, I was be willing to give up some of mine to help complete these, but if everybody's content to, you know, go ahead and pay out cash for the rest of these, I'm good with keeping my money. I can spend it.
I would, I would give up some, if you could find me some mine to give up.
He's got all yours in store.
What are you talking about? Why are you talking about something to give up? What's he talking, what are you talking about?
Well, he's got, next, there's $300,000 over there. He was going to apply to it, but.
Yeah.
Oh, Paul, I didn't figure you wanted to do that. I figured you wanted to use it. Do that.
Well, I am now.
Okay. All right, I'm good.
Look.
Dave, you made a motion to do what?
Oh, I made a motion to approve it like it is. I don't mind.
What I'm saying is, you missed giving it a week. It's fairly. I don't, I mean, we're going to be back in here if everybody wants to study it. You made a motion on the 750.
Right, that's right, on not to go over the 750.
But, so that wouldn't cover, if we just wrapped the whole thing in there, because you're going to be at 1.7, so this sheet's not a square, I guess is my thing. The 750's not right. The 740's not right.
Well, it's right on bond.
The bond, the bond's right, but that's not what it's going to cost to finish the projects that are here.
Correct. We don't, you know.
We don't have a piece of paper that says we got to come out of, for someone.
If you want, yeah, if you want me to come back and, and give you a recommendation on zeroing out the bond?
Oh, what?
I can do that. On zeroing out, zeroing out the negative, yeah. I can do that, but I like my job.
I know, I know. I'm just saying, I.
Yeah. Scare everybody a chance to throw it over.
All right, let's do that.
So, we're going to just table it to Monday?
Set it to the 13th? That's what I'd like to do. I'm just one of the others.
I'll be at that meeting. I don't want to do it at that meeting.
Do we actually meet that day?
Yes, sir, we, we have to go to that.
Yeah.
Why don't we meet that prior Friday? That one, he does that.
Uh, because.
You got to set it. He's got, huh? You got to post it and all that.
Yeah, so we, I think we probably got a hearing set.
Oh, we got what?
Way to go, Renee.
Renee has set a hearing for the Monday.
For what now?
There's a hearing set on the 13th.
Friday before.
Well, I can't, I'm not going to be at that day. So, I'd rather not, obviously, rather not do it that day, the 13th. There's any time, let's say nothing before then, either.
So, so, so if you approve it today, you're basically approving the 1.7 million of it, right? You're approving the 750 in bond, and then everybody's, everybody's in an agreement, so the million-dollar over, right?
That would say, it would prove.
Are you under a deadline, being us to get this done?
That's what I said, the next meeting.
Well, what do it the 30th?
Do it on 30th? All right. Okay.
I don't think nothing's changed.
If there's a deadline on something, I will get back with you next Monday.
All right.
There is a point at which it will be too late to change your mind about things. We are not at that point yet.
But the 30th is not it.
We won't be that soon on the 30th, I don't think. Obviously, there's some work in progress, and we keep running the work.
Yeah.
And we're going to be some encouraging calls and spending bond money.
The numbers will change.
Yeah.
All right, so it takes us back, though, to the one we tabled that Janice was going to remind me of. She forgot. Under Mr. Parker's, that Andrew Jackson Circle. I'm going to say, we didn't do anything with that. You want to put that to the 30th, or?
We can dial that one.
Just go ahead and what?
Yep.
That's on the, basically, what you're doing there, I'm double checking what my notes say. It's awarding the bid, right? I mean, that's what we're voting on. All right, so let's go back up if Mr. Hicks is done. I'm going to come back to Mr. Parker on that potential action on Andrew Jackson Circle, right?
Correct.
So, we've got the bids in front of us, so board just wished to entertain a motion to, I guess, award the bids based on the recommendations given by Mr. Parker.
I'll make that motion.
All right, so a motion by Mr. Morrison to approve, award the bids to Hemphill Construction, right, 766, 322?
Right.
I don't understand what we're doing here.
I went back up to, uh.
I had it marked right here. One more, right here.
Yeah, so it's awarding this bid right here to do Andrew. That's basically awarding it on the fee that's based on the bond sheet at 41708950, right? That's what you're, that's what you're voting to approve.
Correct.
All right, so I got a motion by Mr. Morrison.
I'll motion a second.
All right, so a motion a second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Just for clarification, you have on the bond, you've already had to put this extra 250 in there to cover it.
That is correct. It's 260 something.
Yeah, all right.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the light sign. That'd be me. I'm voting no on the basis of the awarding of the bid, not the movement, so. All right, same, Mr. Parker? Anything else? Additional business, Mr. Slay? There's a E word down here under item 14, saying.
Not invoking that today.
No E word. Magic E word, right?
I don't use that word.
So, no additional business, no E word, magic, under item 14. So, last item to recess until 13 June, 9 a.m. Entertain a motion for that?
I'm making a motion.
Second. So, a motion by Mr. Calhoun, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the light signs. Recess till 13 June.